Hi, Pat.
Hi.
Did you see our neighbors across the street move now?
No.
A big moving man there.
Why would we come across this?
They have a big thing, a storage thing, right across the street from me.
Oh, okay. So why is this his house?
I don't know. I think they should have. I mean, that's something.
Not the, not the one where this was. Basically, they're.
Make sure the blue lights are on all of your microphones to make sure they're on.
Hey, Bill, do you know what the Wi-Fi network is here?
Yes, but we're recording right now.
Okay.
So it, it's the.
Never mind, that's fine.
Okay. Do you have to update these laptops yourself? Like mine, the battery went down, so it says it's May 23rd. I use my own at home, but. I thought they updated pretty quick. Should have brought my personal.
No, I'm just gonna give a couple more minutes to see if we have our other commissioners attend. Did we have any calls from anyone?
Nope.
Okay, I will call to order the Seidra Woolley Planning Commission meeting of August 15th, 2023 to order at 6:32 PM. Will everyone almost stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Wait till Commissioner Maddox gets seated.
Like I said, I'm.
It's all right. Okay, everybody ready? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Okay, roll call. Commissioner Freiberger.
Present.
Commissioner Cock.
Present.
Commissioner Johnson, absent. Commissioner Fournette, is anyone online? Commissioner Fournette, are you there? Currently absent. Commissioner Maddox.
I'm here.
Commissioner Fatizi, present, and Commissioner Huggins, present.
Here.
So has anyone had the, has everyone had the opportunity to take a look at the minutes from July 18th, 2023? And are there any comments? It was, it was pretty involved, so take your time, everyone. So I will go around the room. Commissioner Freiberger, since you were here, do you have anything to add? We're gonna be discussing a lot of this tonight as well, so.
Uh, no comments on the minutes.
Commissioner Cock?
No com, no comments.
Commissioner Huggins?
Yeah, I wasn't here the last two meetings, so I'll let you guys sort it out.
I'm still gonna ask. Commissioner Maddox, any comments?
Same as Pat, I wasn't here, and so I don't have any comments on the accuracy of the minutes.
Okay, and neither do I. Would anyone like to make a motion to approve?
I'd say move.
We have a motion from Commissioner Freiberger. Do I have a second?
I second.
Commissioner from, from Commissioner Cock? Do we have any further discussion? None? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries with no following amendments. So we'll move on to the general public comments section. And prior to opening the general public comments section, if anyone wishes to speak, please limit comments to three minutes or less. Comments may also be submitted via email or mail ahead of all scheduled monthly Planning Commission meetings and read into the record at that time. And if you would like to speak, please state your name, address, or any group or organization that you represent. So I'll open the general public comments meeting, the general public comments section at 6:36 PM. Do we have any emails to be read into the record?
We do not.
Is there any members of the audience wishing to speak at this time? Please introduce yourself.
My name's Philip Murray. I live at 101 West Woodward Street. I'm here for a friend of mine, Paul, I can't remember, pronounce his last name. Anyway, he's wanting to split up his property in this, so it's more buildable. He's over on Haynes Street. He has three 30-foot lots. On the plat map, they're separate lots or numbered, or separate, separate ones. And he takes up one and a part of a lot, so it's, he could fit it in 45 feet really easy, and the other 45 feet should be a buildable lot. It's, it's just under the 6,000 square feet, which is ridiculous because there's houses on 30-foot lots over there. And, uh, from what I understand, you're supposed to be trying to fill in all the, all the properties around here, make them buildables instead of having urban sprawl. And this is a big, big lot. It's 45 by 120, and it easily fit a house, and they're that way everywhere in, in this development. And, uh, wasn't prepared for this, but, uh, that land as a buildable lot would be like worth like $161,000, just as a lot. And it's, it'd be very important to him to have that money in his bank account right now. And either that, or he has to sell the whole thing. And I'm sure a developer will come in and get it pushed through and build a house. But, um, yeah, like I said, I'm not real prepared for this. I was still gonna try to write it up and, uh, have a hard time doing that. But just over here on Puget, I think it's Puget Street, you, you let a, somebody build a duplex over there on a 30-foot wide lot, and you're saying, well, it's a downtown business district. But from what I understand, it's a duplex and not a business. And it's built clear out to the road or to the sidewalk within a few feet. And I know other duplexes in the downtown business district, they had to have setbacks. And this doesn't make sense, they get to do that, and this, and this guy can't even build a reasonable-sized house and have plenty of yard around it. And it.
I feel like we're, I think, feel like we're missing something. Has he been rejected for a permit or something?
He didn't put in a permit, we're just trying to, this should be for everybody that has lots like this, so. I don't know how to permit it, get that in exactly. I do have a form here, but it's for, doesn't seem to apply, and it's $400. It's for a variance of zoning that, we're not trying to do, get a variance on zoning just to, that make these other lots buildable, because they are separate lots on paper on the plat, and you're supposed to go by what the plat says for the intentions of the platter. And he sold them all as 30-foot wide lots. And if you bought four or five, no big deal, you could sell, build on each 30-foot lot if you wanted. But now he's put rules on it that came later, and you still have to go back to the original plat map, what, what it says. And, uh, anyway, I'm just trying to help them out, and I'm gonna try to get, I'll see about getting some form to fill out and get to you, or, but I really think the plat, the planning needs to change in this town. You're putting, you got so many places out here that are bus, downtown business district, and it's nothing but houses. Nobody needs a downtown business anymore. The, with the, with the internet, selling stuff and everything, they're not, they're not required anymore, and you're, you're putting burdens on everybody. I know for a fact that if you have a downtown business and you want, and you get a bank loan, they charge you 3% more interest on it. It's harder to sell, banks don't deal with you very well. It puts burdens on people.
So I can totally appreciate the frustration, especially when, when I deal with multiple venues, not just the city of Seidra Woolly. But the process to modify that is a variance, and I'm sure Nicole could help you out. If you, if you head down to City Hall and you'll have a hearings examiner, there's a whole other process outside of this group here. So this would not be the venue to bring that discussion up with. However, there is a structure for that, and that would be the variance structure. And you're right, certain things are unique, and that is taken into consideration when it goes in front of the individuals that make that choice. But this particular group, we don't, we don't have any of those types of powers, so to speak.
But we are the, we are the right body to come to if you have suggestions like that for things that we should do.
Very much so.
I mean, I'm, I'm listening when you say too much CBD. I hear you when you're saying you should be able to get the, the small lots. So that was good to bring that to us, but we can't help you with the process. That has to be Nicole.
But this, you know, this is for a lot of, a lot of people out there that have bigger lots that they could make smaller, because, you know, they bought it, and now it's worth so much, and their, their taxes have gone up so much. It's like, well, I got, I gotta move, can't afford to live here anymore, unless he can sell something and get by for a little longer until it goes up again.
You know, one thing I appreciate, because we, we see you here, one of the only people all the time.
About the only person.
Right, so, so you know we're working on it. I mean, it's not like we're throwing this, like kicking anything down, down the road, so to speak. We're trying to be very proactive for a lot of situations like that, and we absolutely do hear you. So, but the variance process is already defined, and Nicole's staff would absolutely be the one to.
They've helped out, and I just thought, you know, bring it up in front of your people again, because I, I don't know what exactly your jobs are. I know you, you come up with things and then you put it in front of the city council, but you're, and they, they make the decisions of yes or no.
Technically, we're an advisory group when it really comes down to it, but we do spend a lot of time looking at the miniscule details of quite a few things, and many of us have quite a bit of experience dealing not only in the public sector, but as well as in land use in general. So, so to help you out, yeah, that would be a variance. And definitely, our city staff, I think, is pretty capable of helping people out when it comes to that.
Yeah, I was reading the one, the one paper I have for a variance on the zoning, and it's $400, and you got 500-foot area, you could send letters out to everybody, and wasn't understanding, three copies or something. Anyway, they put the library in, they never sent me a thing with them doing anything over there, the new library. It's like, really? And then you just pushed everything through there? Just ridiculous. Anyway, so I'm not sure how things really work.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And feel free anytime to, to make any comments. You know how open this, this.
You're open and everything. Do I get to speak up about the parklets and stuff?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Okay, do we have anyone else online wishing to comment during the general public comments? We have two public hearings coming up soon. So, so are you, are you Hiller, Hiller West? Your, your audio's off. We can't hear you.
Can't hear you. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Oh, thank you. Commissioners, I just wanted to introduce myself. My name is Hiller West. I was appointed by Mayor Johnson a couple of weeks ago to fill in as interim director of the Community Development Department. That's working with Nicole and Bobby and Jana on administering the duties of the department. And that includes providing service and assistance to the Planning Commission. So just wanted to introduce myself. If there are any questions about my background or about me, just please go ahead. Otherwise, hello?
You know, thanks for, you know, this is all new to me, and so thank you for being here. Yeah, sure, can you private, you know, help us out a little bit? Give us some of your background, and yeah, it'd be great to hear. I think we can do it during this section here.
Sure, I'll, I'll keep it brief, but I have a, a career in being planning director for cities and counties in Western Washington and Northwest Oregon. I was, throughout my career, I was planning director for the cities of McCulteau, Monroe, Buckley, and also planning director for Clatsop County in Oregon, Island County, just to our west, and served in other planning roles with a council of governments down on the Columbia River, and with Grace Harbor County over on the Olympic Peninsula. So it's a 38-year career. I retired in 2020, but when the call went out for some help, given that your former planning director had left for an alternate city, the city of Anacortes, then the Proffman Company forwarded my name to the mayor and council, and they graciously appointed me a couple of weeks ago to serve on an interim basis while a search is conducted for a permanent replacement. So that's, that's my role here with Seidra Woolly.
You know, welcome aboard, and thank you. That's quite the, the history in planning. I mean, seriously, do you travel with luggage all the time?
Thank you. Yeah, sometimes it, it does feel like 38 years. But I'm happy to be here, and please reach out to me if you have any questions. And I'm, I'm happy to be working with Nicole, who is just doing a fantastic job, and with Bobby Castilleja, and, and with Jana, just great staff.
Now, well, we appreciate you, because right now, yeah, that's a really vital role around here, especially when we're gonna be discussing comp plan updates and things like that. So having someone with intimate knowledge of that process is really critical in that department, big time. Can't even understate it.
Well, that's why I'm happy to be here, happy to help.
Hiller, thank you very much. Does anybody else have anything?
So just thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Thanks for coming on board.
Yeah. So at, at this time, I will.
Look forward to meeting you all in person.
You will. I will close the general public comments section at 6:49 PM, and we will move on to our public hearings. So public hearing number one, possible amendments to Chapter 10.44 SWMC to update sidewalk cafe regulations and to add regulations for streeteries and amendments to Chapter 1704 SWMC and define streetery. So at this time, Nicole, take it away. Lead us off.
Thank you. Okay, so the Planning Commission has seen this proposal a number of times now, so should be familiar with the background, giving reason to the need for new regulations for sidewalk cafes and streeteries. So I think tonight I wanna focus on the edits that have been included since the last presentation. So since the July 18th meeting, following Planning Commission's recommendations, the following edits were made. So we talked about not allowing streeteries in the UVMU, as there's very little on-street parking available there, so took that out. We talked about which streets in the central business district might be less viable for streeteries, too. So I excluded Metcalf Street and State Street, and that's just following the public's concern of available on-street parking in, for businesses in those areas, as well as the safety concerns for high traffic in those areas. I also specified that sidewalk cafes and streeteries are only to be used by the single business they're associated with. Specified the maximum building height for sidewalk cafe and streetery structures, ensured that no sidewalk cafe or streetery structure would be built blocking a vision clearance triangle. And then I removed the typo that said that streeteries needed to be contiguous with the building. Just kinda copied and pasted that by accident. I did add a few additional edits. I got the chance to kinda go over these with Hiller before I brought this back to you guys, so he had some suggestions to add in. The first being to remove person from the construction requirement, number five for sidewalk cafes, and construction requirement number six for streeteries, and that's in regard to the heating elements. So it's just taking out the, the fact that heating elements can't be within three feet of people, just due to the, it's, it's impossible for the city to regulate how close people are going to get to heating elements. So that, and then to address the public's concern for lack of available parking, again, put a statement in there that on-street parking needs would be evaluated on a case-by-case basis for streetery applications, and that limitations might be placed on the size of streetery that you're allowed to have if parking availability, availability would be substantially affected. And then some minor edits to clarify the ADA accessibility requirements for streeteries as well. So following the discussion of these amendments, I'll ask that Planning Commission, please recommend these amendments for approval. Thank you.
Thanks. So prior to opening, another disclosure, if you would like to speak, please state your name, address, or any group or organization you're representing. We will open up public hearing number one at 6:53 PM. And at this time, do we have any emails or mail to be read into the record?
We do not.
Do we have any audience members wishing to speak?
Philip Murray, 101 West Woodward Street, Seidra Woolly. Yeah, it, it bothers me that you have the sidewalk cafes that are all fenced in, and you have barrels around them and planters, and there's nothing in them, there's, there's no business there. They need to go away. Last I checked, that particular one didn't even have a permit, a valid permit. They were temporary, they were supposed to see, see how well they worked, and just sits there, and it looks horrible in town. Same thing with the newspaper boxes, they don't put newspapers in anymore, those need to get off the streets. But I really don't like them fenced in. If you're gonna have them, you bring out tables and chairs, and you put them out there. And at the end of the night, you bring them in. That way, there's, you don't have people beating them and throwing them all over the place, which I have personally witnessed. And it, if, if the people don't like doing that, then they, putting them in and out, then maybe they won't have it. So, you know, they have to work a little bit for it, but it keeps the sidewalks clear for a good part of the day and night, then. The one, the one that's on the street out there, it's been there for a long time, and I was told that it was there for, allowed because of COVID. You know, it takes up like four parking spots. It's in front of their business, but those people that would have parked there for their business are now parking in other people's businesses, and it creates a problem on that street, because there are quite a few restaurants right there. And it, it's a benefit to one person, one company. Well, now the, yeah, the bullpen has one out there, too, now, and that's pretty much permanent, I believe, too. I don't think they should be permanent. What else was there? And one business should only get one, because during the Fourth of July, the one business, it was down there at the Woolly Market, they put a beer one in out in the street, and it only got like 20 people in the total, three, three months it was in there. I mean, it's ridiculous taking up that much parking right there. But it should be limited to one per business if they are gonna do it. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other audience members? Obviously not. Any members online wishing to speak? And Mr. West, if you wanted to make a comment at this point, I, you, you're free to opine on this.
Commissioners, Nicole, I think, encapsulated it all very well. I think the change to the heating element was simply to recognize that often, just by personal observation, the heating elements are placed closer to people than three feet, and I don't think the city wants to be in the position of trying to enforce that. Regarding Mr. Murray's comment about the limitation of one per business, Nicole may correct me, but I believe the intent of these amendments is to limit these to one per business. In fact, they, they need to be located directly in front of the business. And I think that, that's all the comments I have for now.
Thank you. So at this point, I will close public hearing number one at 6:57 PM, and it's Planning Commission discussion time. We'll start with you, Commissioner Cock. I'll go right to left, and we'll go down the line, and how we've been doing it in the past.
Yes, thank you, and I appreciate your comments, sir. I, I was curious, I probably missed this completely, is something like Lorenzo's, you know, where they're in a parking lot, that's not a streetery, right? That's completely different.
That would be different, yes.
Okay. Yeah, I, because I believe, like shown in the work here and the analysis, that there's very limited opportunity in the downtown to do this. You know, we have one existing at Magnol. You know, we have one existing at Magnolia. And I think on a case-by-case basis, it really has to be looked at because I do appreciate the comment that with a streetery, even though it takes, it's only in front of that business, the people who would go there park somewhere else in someone else's business. So I think that's a valid point. But I think the way this is written is very solid and prepares us for the future. And thank you very much. Those are my comments.
Off to you, sir.
I am a big fan of streeteries. I've, you know, eaten at them extensively in other municipalities, and I think they bring a vibrant sort of life to the street. And just because a current business that has one might be underutilized, I think is not a reason to get rid of them outright. I look forward to the day when Cedar Woolly has a vibrant sort of downtown scene that people can walk around and dine at a variety of different streeteries. And so I appreciate all the work that's gone into this, and I have read through it, and it looks pretty solid to me. And, yeah, I look forward to moving this forward.
Thank you. Commissioner Freiburger.
So to the point made in the staff report about the reference to the streetery must be contiguous with the building, I think that somehow slipped back in, if I saw that correctly. And I'm trying to find the spot where I saw it, that it just needs to be struck out. Ah, yes. So in ten forty-four, one fifty-five, oh, it's sidewalk cafes. So in number C, it's still in there, so.
So sidewalk cafes do have to be contiguous.
Okay, so we're leaving it in there for that one, okay.
Yeah, so it's specifically the streeteries that that was the correction needed.
Okay. All right, then.
Commissioner Huggins, your turn.
Okay, thank you. I read over this. You guys did a lot of work while I was gone, and I appreciate all of you for the work that you have put in on it. I just had two little quickie corrections, maybe, and then a clarification. The first one, on the sidewalk cafes, under construction, letter E, number eight. I don't, sorry, I can't bring it up here on my computer, but basically it says it has to be run by the city planning department, but it says shall. And when I read that, I said, why does the planning commission have to approve them? I think it should read as, I think it should read, "All plans for sidewalk cafe structures and covers must be submitted to the City of Cedar Woolly Planning Department for approval." And the same for the, the same for the streeteries, or, yeah, streeteries one, two.
So number eight reads as, "The building department shall approve the construction of all sidewalk cafes or structures."
Right. And I'm just reading it through as somebody who hadn't read it before, because I hadn't updated on it, I read that as, "The city has to approve them." And so to clarify it, to fix that problem, I was suggesting that you change it to, "All plans for either streeteries or sidewalk cafe structures and covers must be submitted to the City of Cedar Woolly Planning Department for approval." And that way, you have the right to deny or approve them. One of those little legal things. I don't know if John would have said anything about that or not, but.
So you're saying that the way this is worded could be construed that the building department is required to approve?
Yeah, they shall. They shall approve it.
That makes sense, yeah.
Yeah. And then my other thing for clarification is the, is about what? Sorry, your name, sir?
Murray.
Murray, yeah.
Hillary.
Yeah, Murray. It was about what he said. I'm less, I'm less clear now than I was before I heard him speak, so I wanted to get clarified. Is it possible that if you're a business on the main street of Cedar Woolly, that you can build a sidewalk cafe, leave five-foot of, five-foot of open sidewalk for people, pedestrians to pass, and then also have a streetery that does the same or something completely different in your parking spaces in front of, in front of your store? Are you limited to one, or are you allowed to have one of each?
We can't have one at all on Metcalf Street.
Yeah, we removed it from Metcalf and State.
Well, anywhere that is allowed. Are you allowed to have something on the sidewalk and something in the parking spaces as well?
The intention was to have one or the other, but that's up for discussion, I suppose.
So anyway, I just wanted to bring that up because that was a point of confusion for me. I'm very much for eateries. I'm going to go on the record. I just came back from three weeks in Spain, and I did La Rumbla in Barcelona, and the whole street is, is just street cafes and eateries. And you can barely walk there. There are so many people enjoying it in the afternoon. I would like to see a fraction of that here in Cedar Woolly. It would be awesome. But we got to do it right, and you guys are off to a really good start here.
I think by adding, if you had both, it would just kind of add a cluttered look to the downtown area. I don't kind of.
It's also something that can be changed later. So if you said just one, and then, and then somebody wanted to try it, and we were, you know, or we realized that we're missing out on something to not have that, then we could change it, so.
Okay, with that, the only thing I'm still caught up on, not that I don't think this is a great idea, and the fact that it's going to be limited in certain places, and Metcalf in particular, it won't be allowed, and there's a whole bunch of reasons for that. I'm still concerned about placement over infrastructure. And we just have a line here, "They shall be designated for easy removal in case of emergency." How do you, how do you state that? How do you come with some language? I mean, what, what somebody would consider easy removal might be considered by somebody else like, you know, what if you have to make a call at two o'clock in the morning and get something out of there? Because there's something vital over one of these. So I think we should still have some language in there that, to be determined by whether it's planning or building, you know, I don't think it's a big deal if it's over a sewer main, but if it's over a gas main or some other, you know, underground infrastructure, like telecom has been underground forever, power, just certain things. We should have a little bit more beef in there if we're going to place one of these structures because they're not going to be easily removed. There's no way. We're debating it now, but it's really not a debate. We're just going over certain things. So I'm still kind of caught up on that. And then the other thing I'm caught up on is if we're going to dedicate city space for businesses to basically expand, there's got to be some kind of fee that they pay the city to have that option. And I mentioned it the last time, whether it's seasonal, annual, or whatever. I mean, that's the public right of way. And if somebody's going to take the public right of way, that's occupying the real estate, and they're going to be running a business out of it. But, yeah, there should be some type of fee structure if they want to expand and do something like that. I think it's just fair to everybody, especially the public. So I don't think we addressed any of that in here.
Do other municipalities that we're aware of charge a fee?
The answer is yes. Bellingham, I think, was something nominal. It was like four hundred fifty bucks. Bothel reversed theirs and started charging for it. See, it was all COVID twenty-twenty stuff to preserve, you know, the industry, to keep things outside. So it depends on where you're at, but absolutely different jurisdictions will charge for that feature because you're adding on to the dining space.
Right, and it is a public right of way.
It is a public right of way.
I support the idea of streeteries, and I think Magnolia is fine where it is, but, you know, I'm not opposed to looking into that.
Right. Well, I'm not opposed to the concept. It's just if we're going to occupy the public right of way, someone on city council is going to ask the same question.
Yeah, I'm a little nervous to put bounds on, you know, whether these be seasonal, temporary, from this X amount of time to this X amount of time, permanent, whatever, is.
Yeah, but that's the reality of it. You're going to have potentially a different structure in the summertime than you're going to need for the wintertime, and, you know, it's, I've been here and there going on twelve years. We're pretty barren in the middle of the, in the middle of the winter. Not much going on, but, you know, come Memorial Day weekend, the city rocks. So I'm just saying that.
What if we did something more to the effect of, it's a yearly permit, and you go and renew it if you want to keep your thing there?
That's an idea.
I believe that's how it's typically done. I, Mount Vernon does the long-term right-of-way, and it's supposed to be renewed and certain things that need to be updated every year. And so I believe, if I'm recalling correctly, that there is a fee associated with that every time just because staff has to look at it, and so.
What would be a business example in Mount Vernon? Let's say on First. I'm just thinking, there's a bunch of seating outside a bunch of the businesses.
Well, for example, District Brewing, of course, is not actually a streetery. It is a sidewalk cafe, I guess they would call it because it's in that public right-of-way area, but.
Do they charge them for that space?
I am not aware of any fee besides just the permit fee. So, and I'd have to go back and look, but I do know that it is a long-term right-of-way permit that is supposed to be renewed every year.
I think having a long-term right-of-way permit requirement is, makes sense because then the city has the ability to revoke that permit if there's a problem with it, you know, or add additional stipulations if something arises. I do feel like the fee should be relatively nominal. I think there's a lot of, well, it certainly is public space. I do believe there's a genuine public benefit to streeteries and the city in general. It creates a vibrant, you know, potentially vibrant atmosphere, and, you know, that lifts all boats. And so instead of trying to be onerous with our regulations in that regard, if a, if a business owner is willing to take the risk and build one of these things and try to make it pay for itself, I think we should encourage that in any way possible.
I agree, yeah. One last thing, though, since we're talking about that. It's the transferability of something. I mean, we see businesses sell all the time. We did something similar with the ADU. You know, we do have experience when we permit a certain type of use, and then if there is a change in ownership, that particular new owner had to comply or whatever. So the transferability, and especially for somebody selling a business, they would want to make sure that they have that right to transfer and assign to a new buyer, a new owner, because that will definitely be an asset to that organization. That was just one thing I would, that should be, those are the, read the detail kind of things.
Just to add something in the permits required section, transfer of ownership, you'll want to make sure that that permit gets transferred as well.
So it's my understanding, just thinking about how it's handled, and this is for, we don't, that I'm aware of really have streeteries per se because there's plenty of room for sidewalk cafe more. But say, in Pine Square, old business goes out, new business comes in, they have to apply for a right-of-way permit, even if there was an existing outdoor seating area. Now, that may have been more to do with the fact that they wanted to change the configuration. I'm not entirely clear on that, but I believe in La Conner that if a new business came in, they had to basically show that they were either keeping stuff the same or something like that. It wasn't just a straight takeover, so to speak, so. And of course, if any changes were proposed, they would have to submit new. But I believe the permit itself, it depends on how you, how you, I guess, would word the permit. But, you know, if it's good for a year, then unless there's any changes, I don't know that that would necessarily expire, and that's probably getting too into the weeds, but.
We need to get into the weeds, though. So, for instance, the insurance and liability, somebody would need to show a proof of insurance if they're buying out that business, whatever, the new owner coming on. And if they're going to keep that particular asset in place, they would need to show proof of insurance and liability insurance.
Precisely.
Do you know what the cost is of the right-of-way permit?
Sixty dollars.
Per year?
Yes.
It's a deal.
It is a deal.
I would like to mention that I've been told, keep fees out of the municipal code because they change a lot.
Sure.
So we could put this in the master fee schedule, whatever numbers we decide, but not in here.
Not to council's discretion what they want to do with that anyway. I mean, we're just making sure that it's actually in there. What they actually decide to plug in as a number is totally out of our hands. Anyone else? So before I look for a motion, do we want to make these updates ahead of time? Or can I request a motion with, and this is what I pinned, with the following amendments to the language?
I mean, the amendments you've asked for are pretty simple.
Aren't that much, yeah.
So looking for a definition of easy removal for the, for the critical infrastructure bit. The one that Pat mentioned, that all plans for sidewalk cafe structures or covers shall be submitted to the planning department for approval. Putting in that the permit shall be renewed on an annual basis for long-term right-of-way use, and then to make sure that they transfer that permit upon sale. So I think that those are pretty simple. I can do that, and.
Okay.
Yeah, I believe Commissioner Huggins, and I was also thinking, I agreed on that. I had mentioned maybe specifying that either one or the other, but cannot have more than one. Yeah, just because if it's not called out, somebody may, it may come up, so.
I'm kind, I'm of a little bit of two minds on that because I have certainly seen successful applications of a business having both a sidewalk cafe portion and a streetery portion. And honestly, it's been, you know, very successful. And so I don't know if, because Metcalf and State Street are prohibited from the streeteries, I don't know necessarily of a place where it would be applicable, but it seems to me that, is it explicitly? I mean, I know you said sort of the intent was for one or the other, but is there an explicit prohibition on that?
No.
I guess it seems to me like we might want to leave that on a case-by-case basis because, anyway, I have seen it be, been very successful, and I wouldn't want to necessarily limit that.
Yeah, I agree with it on the case-by-case basis. I'd hate to limit a business, and then it seems to me you might get into definitions of where does one start and the other end. And then, you know, that places our city officials in a lose-lose situation. So I would, I would defer to the judgment of our city folks who, on a case-by-case basis, can determine what's best.
You know, there's more than a few things here. There's a bunch of things here. So do we want to wait and maybe do another public hearing? Adjust what we just put in there and do this over again? Because we're real close, but those aren't, those aren't minor things, in my opinion. It's not like making changes to, you know, meeting minutes with the following adjustments. These seem like a big deal, and since I believe it's a big deal just in general, in the general direction of where we'd like to go in the city, I really want to get this right.
Yeah, I'm okay with another public hearing.
Okay. Further discussion on that?
I'm okay with that, too.
Sure.
I think it'd be too difficult to make a motion and. I think it'd be too difficult to make a motion and state all of those changes concisely.
Okay, madam, you know what you, you need to do for the, for the next one? And, and they're detailed items that just make this better all around, I believe? That there, there's visibility, because some things, you know, can be ambiguous, and ambiguity is bad in the planning arena.
Mm-huh.
Okay, we will move on to public hearing number two. Possible amendments to Chapter seventeen dot sixteen SWMC to remove statement in intent section restricting R-15 zoning designations.
Sorry, Joe, is it, is it just me? Did, or did you, did you close the-
I did, I closed, yeah, I closed it at, uh, at six. Called it, uh, but the answer is yes.
Okay, sorry.
I closed, I closed the, uh, public hearing.
I just missed it, sorry.
Before I, before I did for our commentary. I'm actually writing it down, too. Think I'd be able to find it quicker. So go ahead.
Okay. At the July eighteenth Planning Commission meeting, we heard our former city attorney and planner, Pat Hayden, speak on the reasoning behind the placement of the statement restricting new R-15 zoning designations. And he explained that the city council had asked for a restrictive ordinance to be put in place to remedies, remedy the city's kind of explosive demand for multifamily development, that the city was not prepared to handle at the time. So Mr. Hayden explained that it wasn't a governing ordinance, that it didn't govern a metric, and the code had been violated several times since that, um, restriction was put there. Um, and he went on to say that he supports the recommendation to remove the statement and suggested that it be replaced. Proposed that the city look at the comprehensive plan from an affordable housing perspective and suggested replacing the phrase with something to the effect of "multifamily housing is not intended to replace single-family residences, and particularly not intended to replace affordable owner-occupied, single-family residences." So, at that meeting, the Planning Commission and staff agreed that the best strategy moving forward would be to remove the statement from the intent section of Chapter seventeen sixteen and to later draft a replacement statement to include in the housing element of the comp plan as part of the comp plan update process. So that way, we could proceed with that rezone application from R-seven, R-15. And the new statement that would be going into the housing element of the comp plan would be more enforceable, since the comp plan is something that you file with the state. Um, and just that it would be smarter to allow me, the staff, to, uh, ensure that, that new statement doesn't conflict with any other updates to the comp plan housing element. Um, so, yeah, this is, it's not any different from how you saw it before. Just crossed out the intent section statement there. Um, and I'll ask that after, after discussion you recommend to the council to approve.
Thank you. So at this point, more disclosure. If you would like to speak, please state your name and address, or any group or organization you represent. I will open public hearing number two at seven twenty-two PM. So at this point, is there anyone present that would like to comment on the R-15? Is there anyone online? Bill, is there anybody online? Okay, that would be a no.
I'm looking at the same list that you guys see there.
Okay. I, I never know if somebody, I think there's still an option to dial a, a landline option on, on a hybrid meeting?
Yes, but they will still all show on that right-hand panel.
Right on. So we have no online, nobody in the audience wishing to speak, so I will close public hearing number two at seven twenty-two PM. So at this point, Planning Commission discussion. We will now go from left to right. Commissioner Huggins.
I don't even know where to start with this, but, um-
Jump in.
I have very, very mixed feelings about this. I was one of the people that pushed to, to do it, because we were going to look for other ways to bring housing into the city without making these megastructures. And we did get it down to, I think we're at twelve units right now, is the max for one building?
Correct.
Right. So, we've kind of dealt with it in a sense. But, uh, it's still a bit concerning me. I, I, sorry, I have several things on my mind, one of them being that and another being the fact that, I, I just see us going down slippery slopes. We do have to provide affordable housing, but at the same time, we're going down a slippery slope of making less and less substantial homes in an era where buildings are being washed away, blown away, burned away. What else did I miss? Uh, washed away. And, uh, and so I'm, I'm very concerned about, uh, about, uh, those things. And multifamily is not great, and multifamily goes up in flames a lot. And, but all, right now, everything's going up in flames, so, uh, it doesn't stick out as much as it did five years ago. Anyway, I have very, very mixed feelings about this and, uh, and I'm thinking that I might vote against it on those grounds, not that, um, we don't need the housing and whatnot, but, uh, but simply that, um-
You know, just a quick comment on that. In this particular case, it was to, to address the, uh, that one rezone. So it's not like we're trying to do a blanket kind of statement, saying, well, anybody could just come on in, we're going to rezone to R-15. It was for a very, very specific identification of, number one, was it valid? And the, uh, the attorney, Mr. Hayden, did ju- just a great job. But in this particular case, it was for situational, do we have the latitude? So I guess, I mean, do we want to give up that latitude where we have really, really unique situations? Uh, I think we would want to keep that option open.
I, I agree with you, but I also do not want to be making rules that are applied, um, haphazardly, right? So if, if you're not in with the city, you can't have the thing. Or if somebody else has got a bigger thing than you, or whatever, they get it and you don't. So I think rules have to apply to everybody everywhere, and that's, I think, our job is, um, as, Planning Commission is ma- ma- basically a legislative thing, where we're trying to provide rules that the city council can work from and the planning department can work from to do the thing. I agree that there are times when discretion of the plan, planner is the best thing, like we were just talking about with the, with the streeteries. One or two, depends on, on what they bring to you as a, as a proposal. But, um, but that gets it down to the kind of the minute level. On the bigger level, I don't think we should be passing anything that is to get one thing done. So, um, anyway, that's just, that's mine. So I'm gonna, I'm gonna give up the mic here, because that, that's really what I had to say. And I could change my mind an hour ago, an hour from now on, on that. Like I said, I'm very on the fence about this. We, we really need to do something about housing, but we also need to make sure that our neighborhoods are livable. We need to make sure that our infrastructure isn't going to get burned, blown, or washed away in the, uh, as things change. So, um, anyway, that's, that's my comment, thank you.
Commissioner Freiburger.
So to kind of, I guess, jump off from there a little bit, um, how my understanding of this is, is, um, well, first, I think we have to be careful, not kind of what with, what Commissioner Huggins was saying. This has to be applied consistently and we can't, it may have come up due to looking at a specific rezone, but this has to apply. Um, and so, um, we're not looking at a specific project when we're changing this. It will have implications for specific projects, and that rezone may be the first one. But, um, my understanding is this just cleans up something that seems like possibly a bit of a conflict. Um, if I read correctly what, and heard correctly what, uh, Mr. Hayden had said, it sounded like it did not actually preclude, um, development or, or rezoning to R-15, and that has been done in the past, whether, um, it was something that was done in spite of this, or it just wasn't noticed. Um, I'm not sure, but it was just something that, when it was brought up, when we were considering that, that specific rezone, um, I think we needed clarity on how does this affect that? And this is where we basically wound up, is there is implications, and yes, uh, the comp plan update, the, um, the push for more affordable housing, those are all things that are going to be looked at in a lot more detail, but for the, for the specific circumstances of should a statement like this be in the intent section of our zoning code? Um, is that really an appropriate place for it? Um, it seemed like that was more the question to me. And the simplest fix in that regard seemed to be to just remove it altogether. There was also the option that Mr. Hayden brought up of replacing it, where it still reiterated the focus on affordable, single-family housing, which is, of course, still an option. Um, but that's, that's kind of how I see it.
His comments are on page two. I was going to point this out to you. It's all the way up at the top. I was just looking at that. Commissioner, after you.
Um, I see no problem with striking this statement. Um, any rezone requests, uh, for increased density is going to come before this body, and, uh, we certainly have not been afraid to, uh, oppose, uh, rezones that increase density based on the specifics of the situation in the past, and I don't see any reason why that would change in the future. Um, and so, I, anyway, it, it seems like it makes good sense. Um, I think that the ability for a city to, uh, redesignate, uh, its zoning based on, you know, what's actually going on, um, is, is good policy. And so, uh, that's all I have to say about it.
Commissioner Cock?
Yes, I'm also okay with, uh, striking it. I went back and read, um, Pat Hayden's comments, and they were really interesting and kind of very disturbing about how, you know, you could work at one of the mills or at the steel plant and afford a house and send your kids to vacations, and you could retire. And that's so tough nowadays. It's, we're, you know, I don't have any answers, but we're in a housing crisis where young people can't even afford to buy a new house. I mean, the concept of affordable, single-family housing sounds like a misnomer to me nowadays. And, uh, you know, it's, I do believe in preserving neighborhoods, though. That's been a significant problem in Seattle. So it's, it's a tough mix, you know, because I also believe in affordable housing. We have to figure out some way, and like I said, I don't know the answers, but I think this statement, this intent statement raises some red flags for me, and I, I, I agree to just strike it.
You know, with that, I, I found it a fascinating discussion with him. He was really open, but he was also explaining a point in the history of the city where it was he and just one other individual working on a comp plan update, working on this, and he was very candid. This really was an intent that has zero teeth, when it really comes to any ordinance or really anything else that was put in there. Uh, not flippantly, but again, it had, it was never from the perspective of limiting a planning commission or a mayor and council from making decisions on case-by-case basis. And I absolutely agree with you that it, we, it shouldn't be this all-around, anybody coming on in and, well, here you go, here's a rezone and put fifteen to twenty houses in. But one thing that I, I did appreciate from him, and, uh, just replacing the, the phrase, especially on intent, where multifamily housing is not intended to replace single-family residences, and particularly not to replace affordable, owner-occupied, single-family residences. And again, this all stemmed from that one rezone request, where everything surrounding that property was like basically R-15. There was a church next to it. So it wouldn't have been out of compliance for that, the size of that site. And, uh, yeah, but it spurred a really, really good discussion, particularly when you put things in writing on intent, and then it real, well, that, that's an intent. It's a good idea, but not necessarily the only idea, and it's not necessarily going to hold water, you know, from a ordinance legal standpoint. Pat, I'm going to keep it, let's keep this conversation going. You have anything else you want to add to this?
Yeah, actually I do. Um, Silas, I think, has sold me on it be, uh, as long as, as long as the, as, as long as we have a planning commission that will, because this is what was happening back then, was that people were, we had, we'd only had a planning commission uh, for about ten years at that point. I can't remember if we started in ninety-four or ninety-seven. But we'd only had a, um, we'd only had a planning commission for a short time, and we'd only had growth management for, for one cycle, too. We were the second cycle of the, um, of the up, uh, we were the first cycle of the update in two thousand and one. So, um, what was happening was people were coming in and they'd say, I've already bought the land. I want to rezone this for, um, multifamily, for, uh, R-15. And we're like, well, that's not where we have it on the, on the planning map, you know, and we don't think that's a good idea. And there was a lot of backlash about that, because they didn't understand the whole growth management process, where you come to us now at this point, well, we're talking about the stuff, and I don't know that they're still understanding of that, but they would, they would show up at the city, at the city council and say, hey, you know, the planning commission won't let us build our apartment. And we had acres of stuff that was already zoned, uh, multifamily. And so, the moratorium was maybe for a couple of things. And if I, if I'm repeating Pat, then I'm sorry, but I didn't know if he, he, he had the same perspective that I did. Um, so anyway, that was one of the reasons that, that, that's the reason I voted for it, was that people were just coming in willy-nilly, hey, I got some cheap, you know, R-five land. I want to put an apartment complex on it. And, um, and so, they were circumventing the whole planning process by, uh, GMA planning process by, um, by getting the rezone. So Silas is right. Uh, now we all understand how the process works. The public should know how the pub, process works. And as long as we have a planning commission that's willing to say, um, uh, no, we aren't going to rezone you to, uh, fifteen, because that doesn't fit in the spot, or it's not the right mix, or whatever our, our reasoning is for that particular thing, I think I, I can be on board with removing it. Um, but anyway, that's, that's kind of some of the, some of the history of it.
No, that, that's why you're important to this commission, is because you are the historian. You can go back, but we've given clear examples of where we've made mistakes in the past, and we've always learned by the past, as we've done any forward code going since I'm here, going eight years, ten years. So it's, it's really important to understand the history of it. But in this particular case, like I said, it was just intent, and it really doesn't hold a lot of teeth.
Right, right, and I, I, I knew it had been violated, but what do you say, you know? But, uh, so anyway, um, anyway, that's all, that's all I had to say. I think Silas has sold me on that, as long as we can keep a, our, uh, our opinions and, and hold firm when we, we believe something just isn't a right fit for a rezone.
That's done. That, that's always been like this here. Madam, would you like to add anything?
No, I, I think that's a point, a valid, good point. Uh, we haven't consistently approved, uh, rezones. You have to look at, that's why they come before the planning commission. We have to look at a case-by-case basis, because the GMA, you know, the planning for the next, um, you know, cycle, uh, you know, of how there's percentages of commercial and residential, and that's all kind of planned out. And so anytime you rezone, you, there, there is some wiggle room, but it's limited. And the point, the point is not to just rezone vast swaths of the city just because the developer wants, you know, it's, it's convenient for them, so it has to fit in, so.
Is there a proposed, uh, motion? Is there a proposed, uh, motion in this document?
Yes. I'll get, I'm just going through the table one more time then. We do have a recommendation, so we'll get to that in just a minute. So, would you like to add anything else to the discussion?
No.
Okay. Commissioner Cox?
No, I'm, I'm okay.
Okay, so, uh, I think this was a great discussion and I was so fortunate to have him here to be, like I said, to be very candid, to, to just give us the history of it and to help us make decisions. So, would someone like to make a recommendation, a motion to recommend that the city council approve the proposed amendments to chapter seventeen dot sixteen SWMC?
So moved.
I have a first by Commissioner Maddox. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Cox. Is there any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
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 All opposed? No opposed. Everyone's in favor, so we have a one, two, three, four, five, to zero. I counted.
I think we've got a quorum, right?
Okay. Thank you very much. So, on to unfinished business. We have none. New business, we have none. Planning Commission discussion items. We saved this for you, Commissioner Huggins. Unpermitted ADUs permitted discovered within the city limits. Do we have an update?
No update from my end unless Pat had anything he wanted to say.
No, I've been, uh, I, I was gone for half of June and half of July, so, um, so I haven't worked on that at all.
Okay, because I pushed that out to this meeting.
Yeah. I'll, I'll let you know when I, when I have stuff. I, I am still, I still have my eye on it, but it's kind of, it's morphed a, a little bit. It's not just ADUs I'm, I'm looking at, but, uh, uh, I'll, I'll give you an update on what I, on what I've observed, and what I've observed is, um, that there are some ADUs that have parking problems. And there are also just some single-family homes that have, uh, mom, dad, one or two children with cars, and then they've got a boat, an RV, and an off-road dirt car, whatever you call those, call those things, off-road vehicle, you know? And they're all parked out in the street or in their yard. Uh, in some places, they're, they're, so it's got seven parking spaces, some of these houses need to contain their, their stuff. And so, it's, it's not just an ADU problem. It's, it's already a problem just with ha, houses without ADUs. So, um, anyway, I'm, I'm, I'm still got, I'm still taking pictures and I'm still, uh, looking, looking at stuff as I see it. And hear about it. I have several people that are kind of tossing me, uh, stuff, too. So, anyway, that, that's an update on what I'm, what I'm doing.
No, and their discussion items, they're open. So let's leave this on the agenda for the future meetings.
Okay.
As, because I'm going to start taking a look, especially for like the off-road stuff. They're regular cars. I mean, they're, they're called mules or whatever. And yeah, when you look around town, I'm on Jameson, oh, you want to see collections.
I have, I have some units on Haynes Street, um, right up at the end by the highway. And I, we have, we have ample parking, so it's, it's not a problem for us. But I mean, my, my guys each have a car in, uh, in each of my units. Each person has a car. And then each of them has a work truck that they have to bring home so they can go to work. And then they have, uh, their off-road, uh, vehicle, and one of them's working on a car, and we make them move it periodically to prove that it's moves. Because they don't want to get left there when they're gone. So that's, that's five cars for two guys sharing a, a place together. Just two guys, no kids involved in that scenario. And so, you know, parking is a, is a big, big thing, uh, here in Cedar Wally, where there are options of things to do uh, with your weekends and whatnot. And I don't know what the solution is, but, uh, anyway, uh, yeah.
I had, I had one comment on it. I think anything, discussion of this has to involve the capacity of city staff to enforce it. I mean, do we, do we have, even have that capacity?
You know, that's what brought up this whole discussion. That's what brought up this whole discussion from, from the, from day one. Is on the ADUs, what was permitted, unpermitted. And then you're starting to see people, you know, running fast and loose with the, uh, with the rules.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm curious. I haven't looked through the nuisance code close enough to see if there's anything that restricts the number of vehicles you can have on your property.
On your yard.
Yeah. But I do know that the code says right now, for a single-family house, you're required to provide two parking spaces, nine by nineteen. Unless it's in the driveway area, then the dimensions change, but two. And then if you have an ADU, one additional parking space. It's three. But, no, it's, you know, I'm, I'm the same with the family, you know? When I was growing up, it's mom has a vehicle, dad has a vehicle, I have a vehicle, my brother has a vehicle. And then we have the one in the garage that my brother's working on. And it's like, yeah, it's, it doesn't work.
And I'm sure there's nothing in the ordinances, uh, about the fact that people just like, they just park them in their yard, right? And in the wintertime, it's a mud hole, and the summer, the grass grows back, kind of, and it's packed down, but, uh, but, uh, I mean, we, uh, I don't, I don't want, and I don't think we want, or to control those kinds of things, even though it's not great looking, but, uh, anyway, yeah. Interesting.
Noted.
It's worth discussing, though, at, at the end of a meeting, yeah, totally. Okay, so with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Okay, we have a motion to adjourn from Commissioner Maddox. Do I have a second?
Hold on a second.
Second from Commissioner Freiburger. Is there any other further discussion? Nope, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Meeting closed at seven forty-four PM. Thank you, everyone.
Look at that, it's hour and fifteen minutes. You missed out on the good old days of the three-hour